I'd like to call the order this meeting of the Forest Hills School District Anderson High School Branding and Mascot Committee. Mr. Smith is on Beauchmond and should be here shortly. He had a commitment with the Cincinnati Board, Cincinnati School Board. And Mr. Schaaf, who is on the West Claremont Board of Education, is tied up there, but he's expected to be here shortly. Could you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
There is just one exit out of here. It's there, and then you can go either way up and down the hall, but that's your emergency briefing. Welcome, everybody. This is the second meeting of the Anderson High School Branding and Mascot Committee. This is a meeting held in public, but it is not a public meeting. It is because it is a board meeting, I'm sorry, a board committee. It is subject to Ohio's Sunshine Law. That's why we're having the meetings in public. There are no meetings going on behind closed doors. Forgive me for repeating myself a bit from our first meeting, but I want to remind everyone of some of tonight's ground rules. I'm sure some of you were here at the first meeting and you're aware of those ground rules. I'll lay them out again to remind you and for those, good evening, sorry, and for those that weren't here last time. We're going to do our best to, again, limit this meeting to no more than two hours. The meeting purpose is to discuss the Anderson High School branding and logo and nickname. While the meeting is going to be held and is held in public, we are not going to have public participation tonight, although at the next meeting we may, and that's one of the things the committee is going to discuss tonight. We've thrown around the idea of having the next meeting as nothing but public commentary to extend the process, but it may be something we decide to do, and we'll have that discussion amongst the committee tonight. Tonight, we're going to be discussing the issues. The Board of Education will continue to have public commentary on its agenda at the regularly scheduled meetings. You're welcome to talk. The likelihood is, depending on the numbers, we may be limiting the time, and if there's too many during the regularly scheduled meetings, we may have to limit the number, but we've never done that in the past. As before, we're not going to tolerate interruptions during the meeting. We need to move forward and have our discussions. We won't tolerate clapping, shouts of approval or disapproval, no disruptions of any type, and if you do, you'll be asked to leave. And I'm confident that won't be an issue because everything was so wonderful last time, and we thank you for that again. As I said in the past, I'm the chair of the committee. It's not my intent to control, but instead merely to guide the committee, and as before, I anticipate full committee participation, and based on last meeting, I'm quite confident that won't be a problem. I want to remind everyone that Forest Hills is a great community. We're each other's neighbors and friends. This is a sensitive issue. It's an emotional issue. We're aware of some of what's gone on in the social media. Some of the emails we've had are strong, to say the least. Some of them are civil, and they're not always civil, and that's fine, but there's a difference between how you want to communicate to this committee and how you ought to treat your neighbors and friends. And I would just remind you once again, reasonable people can disagree respectfully and reasonably, and I would not only encourage you all to continue to be reasonable in your discussions with each other, but encourage your friends to do so, too. That's what makes this community great. The expectations for tonight are, I'm going to provide a brief summary of our last meeting, and that really is just the high points. We should then have a consideration of what to do with our April 30 meeting, whether to make it another meeting of just the committee, or we want to take public commentary, or as has been considered. We ended our last meeting with some people who are going to do some work, and we'll have reports from those people who have completed that work, and then we'll move on to discussion. So with that, let me briefly remind everybody of what transpired at our first meeting. And it's my intention, really, to summarize, not to get into detail, and if I mischaracterize anything, I truly apologize. That's not my intent. That's not Randy. So at the first meeting, I made some introductory remarks, much as I've done today. I summarized the issues before the committee and provided some of my thoughts on those issues, which I will not do again this evening. And then each committee member provided their preliminary thoughts on the issue. We discussed overall process and timing. We had some general discussion on the issue, and from that general discussion, I believe there were some themes that emerged. And I'm just calling them themes. There were no decisions. There still have been no decisions on any issues. And again, if I mischaracterize these themes, it's not my intention to do so. First, I thought one of the themes that we heard amongst our discussions was if there was a change, and once again, I say if, I'm not assuming anything. There seemed to be some consensus among the committee that we find a way to preserve as much of the history and tradition as possible. Second theme that I think came out from our discussions was there was an overall concern about how much any change would cost and how that cost would be funded. A third theme that came up during our first meeting was the discussion that if, again, there was a change, I believe there was some consensus that we might try to maintain the colors and preserve the history and tradition to the best extent possible and to do everything in the most cost-effective way. I know we had more discussions than that. I know in doubt that I've missed something, but does anybody think there's other themes that might have emerged during that first meeting that I've not captured? No?
Some aspect of education and how we would either preserve the Native American history education or work it into even more, keep it as its name. Either way, I think that stays, or that's up for discussion.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other themes that may have merged at the first meeting? All right. With that, the information that we agreed to gather, I agreed I'd check on the status of the renovations and the timing for consideration of any change. Patty, you are going to get some cost information. I know you've done that for us. I was going to check on source of funding if there was a change. Julie and Randy, we're going to contact some other schools who've been through this process, and Elizabeth asked for information from the prior committees, 1999 and 2003, and I know made some efforts to gather that. So how about if we address those kind of homework assignments? The first one being the status of the renovations and phases of construction. I could have answered this last time, but I didn't because it wasn't the time. We were going to sit back, but that's the very reason the Board of Education is addressing it now. We are in the midst of renovations. Decisions are being made, and the timing's actually perfect. The construction's not at a time where we can't still make a decision. In fact, it's at a time where making decisions is absolutely perfect. We're not too far in. That would be a little bit different if we were talking about changing the colors, but that's not likely to be the case. Interestingly, as I did look into this a bit further, one of the things I learned is that, in fact, not only does Anderson High School not presently have a mascot, it actually doesn't embrace its own logo and nickname as much as it might in some circumstances. And so some of the things that, you know, our plan for the construction don't already have any intent of putting Redskins or the logo on some of them. And for instance, the new weight room, the weights that have been ordered, they were ordered without the Indian Head logo on them. So we're at a point now where now's the time to make the decision. We haven't gone too far, and whatever we decide can be implemented with the renovations as they're being completed.
Well, I think that's maybe something that's worth talking about is that there seems to be a misconception that we're addressing this because of pressure, and it actually was not. The timing of that just happened anyway. Our planning meeting was, what, February 14?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth. And this was always going to go on the agenda for this year because of the renovations. So I know it feels like it's because of pressure. It's not, and that's why you see us responding somewhat neutrally to the pressure. It's because we had made a decision as a group to talk about this anyway, and it's unemotional to us because of that. Any other comments to that?
Yeah, you know what? I actually had some random thoughts this week, and in line with that, we've received so many emails, and they've been very heartfelt. But there are things that are false, and there are things that are true. And I made a comment last time that perception is reality of some people, and a couple of people said to me, well, reality is reality. So here is the reality. We haven't had outside pressure or any targeting from outside groups to have this discussion. We haven't been bullied by outside groups, and there's no individual board members that have an agenda that I've ever heard of. And really, I was on the board for 13 years before I recently left it. I've never heard that. What is true is that our district is growing increasingly diverse economically, culturally, and has children with more diverse needs than we've ever had. The board took on the issue of diversity several years ago, and actually, I think I might have mentioned last time, when I was a young board member, Ray Terrell from Miami came down and actually worked with us when Dr. Patzhal was still the superintendent. And I don't know that we've been as good about it as maybe we could have been, but we have addressed it and talked about it over the years periodically. And then within the last year or so, before I left the board, there was discussion to revisit the Anderson mascot logo in conjunction with the overall district bond issue and specifically the Anderson renovation. Financially, Jim mentioned this last time, if we're going to incur costs, the question is, do we want to perpetuate costs associated with the Redskins brand if it's going to be changed? So that, I didn't really intend to say all my random thoughts, but I did it in response to you, saying, does anybody else have anything to say?
Yeah, well, it's been a misconception, and I, we didn't get a chance to speak to it, and there's a chance to set the record straight. So people might not believe it, but it's the truth.
Since you're discussing renovations, maybe it would be prudent to address whether having this committee and addressing the logo and the Redskins name, if that detracts from the renovations and how that affects the board making sure that the renovations are proceeding as planned and as needed. I mean, because I know that there's a misconception that because the board's focusing on this, they're not focusing on that.
Yeah, thank you. We've had lots and lots and lots of emails, and I talk about themes. One of the themes of the emails have, haven't you got anything better to do? The answer is yes, I've got billable work for clients, but I've blown that off. This seven-member committee has got a lot of time invested in this, but the Board of Education as a whole does not, and no district administration's involved in this at all. We're continuing the business of the district, and the administration within the district's continuing to do its job, and that includes concentrating on the construction projects remaining, Anderson High School and Turpin in particular. And this isn't distracting from them at all. It's got us, seven members, invested, but no one else in the district. So it's not affecting the business of the district. Thank you. Anything further? Otherwise, I think the next thing would be Patty, if we could hear from you on the costs.
Okay. So I went up to Anderson last weekend, and I took pictures of all the Redskins logos and the word Redskins anywhere through Anderson High School, and I came up to about 100 pictures, and I put those all together. Then I met with Corbett Graphics, Moats Group in the Cincinnati floor, and it came up with a total to replace the vinyl, the signs on the walls, and replace the end zone with the word Anderson and place a Redskins, and apply a vinyl decal to the center of the gym floor and remove Redskins from the end court. That would cost about $154,000. If the gym floor would have to be replaced, that would add about $150,000 to that cost, but that will be a cost that needs to be incurred within the next two years either way. So I then spoke to the athletic office, who was able to come up with a partial cost of the uniforms of $153,000, but they spoke to West Claremont, and their cost to replace everything was $300,000 when you guys started with a brand-new mascot.
Right.
So the final cost to replace the Redskins throughout Anderson would be around $454,000, which includes the $300,000 for the uniforms, but not the total replace the gym floor. And again, that's assuming we do not change colors, that we keep the orange and the black, because that cost would go up tremendously if that would have to be done.
So I don't think Patty's doing justice to the work she's done on this. She sent it to us last week. We've all had a chance to look at it, and Patty did an exceptional job going through and not just taking photographs of the items at issue, but providing the costs and letting us get a feel for what they are. I've had a little bit of follow-up on this because we had an opportunity to do so. And we even mentioned at the first meeting, the gym floor has been sanded so many times it can't withstand one more standing and is scheduled to be replaced in two years. We haven't talked about timing of implementation, but we have talked about doing this in connection with completing the renovations, and if you assume for sake of the argument that we actually complete those when we hope to complete them. With the 2019, August 2019, 2019, 2020 school year, we're actually not going to implement it for a year, and then there's one year left on that floor. You know, $170,000 for one year doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So I think if we were looking at doing this, I wouldn't be inclined to spend that money under any set of facts.
Yeah, so that includes the $15,000, that to put a decal on the middle, and then they could polyurethane over the decal, and then just erase the Redskins on the end. So that would only be $15,000, which is included in the first cost.
And that's how we get to the $454,000.
Yes.
So the uniforms, we have a scheduled replacement cycle for the uniforms, too. Some are scheduled to be replaced this year. I'm not sure which ones.
He said that this year, because it's already too late to order for next year, so next year, nothing would be ordered. With that schedule, which was supposed to be, will not be ordered, so that everything would be included in this price. So that would be everything.
We still have a scheduled recycling. I mean, my point is the school district operates under a five-year forecast, so really, when you talk about school funding and school budgeting, we do everything on five years. I don't know this for a fact, but I was talking to one of the district administration, and we generally recycle these uniforms every four years, you know, as the kids come through. If so, that's within our five-year forecast, and so the uniforms are scheduled to be replaced within the five-year forecast. What we talk about is whether we're going to accelerate it or not, but it's not, I don't think, an incremental cost. The other thing is, as we went through here, because you've got so many pictures, I haven't bothered to add it up, but there's a number of things. In fact, I know there was, I think it was the Hall of Fame was, I think, a $30,000 cost in and of itself. That's the sort of thing when we talk about trying to maintain the history and tradition, that's the sort of stuff that I'd like to see us not touch. I mean, that wall of fame is the Redskins' wall of fame, and when you talk about the Redskins greats, that's who they were when the plaques were put up, and things like the championship banners in the gym and all that sort of stuff. I've not added it up, but it seems to me, knowing that the wall of fame is 30, we're approaching $40,000 to $50,000 on that sort of stuff that, if we're looking to preserve the tradition and history, I'd like not to touch.
But do we get rid of the Redskins part of it? We can maintain it, but just have the Anderson part of it, but not, but remove the Redskins, the actual Redskins logo from it?
Well, I think that's something we talk about, but I think Andy said this. I mean, you know, changing it going forward is one thing, but erasing the history is something else. And, I mean, I'm one person here, but I don't want to touch history.
And honestly, I was thinking the same thing as I'm walking through. I thought, well, that's not fair to, you know, the guy that graduated back in 1976 and his soccer picture's up there. You know, I wouldn't want to take that away from him. He was a Redskins, and that's, I felt the same way, that he should remain a Redskins. How you make that change, if it would change, would have to be a transition.
I'm sorry. Were you done?
Go right ahead.
When we're talking about the uniforms, not all the uniforms have the Redskins head on it, right?
Majority have Redskins somewhere, whether it be a little head on the back or whether it have Redskins on the front or whether.
I mean, you're looking at the, yeah.
We don't have it on track across country, but I try to always minimize the amount of ink just because we want air to go through the shirts.
Wow.
Heat is our enemy.
Right. And I really sadly don't remember from when our kids were there, the football and basketball and, I mean, does football have a logo on the helmet? I just don't remember.
Yeah.
But that's on the helmet, right?
Right.
It's not on the actual uniform.
It's on the uniform somewhere, yeah. Football all has to be replaced.
I think for purposes of our discussion, we should assume.
It's everywhere.
Yeah, I mean, to some extent, that may not be true, but as a general rule, it's got the logo or it says Redskins mostly somewhere on the uniforms, and we ought to make that assumption.
Well, the difference in the uniforms, too, is the varsity would be handed down to JV, and JV hands it down to freshmen. So we're not used to replacing freshman and JV uniforms because it's always the transition down. So this costs, everybody would get new, freshmen, JV, and varsity, which would be a big cost to us at one, as a lump.
Your assumptions in this, we just said, assumed not a change of color, right?
Correct.
Right.
That's no color.
Is there any reason, I might be out of order here, but is there any reason we can't just proceed with assuming that the colors are not changing because that impacts a lot of things?
Well, I.
As per our recommendation.
Our first meeting, I mean, I think we kind of had that consensus anyhow. I mean, if anybody doesn't agree with that, let me know, but.
I'd have to buy a whole new wardrobe.
I think it wouldn't hurt to make it official, or like officially make it a consensus of the committee so that, honestly, so that the public knows. That is a hot-button issue, and we all agree.
That'd be something easy to come to consensus. Again, we're not deciding, but it would be our recommendation as a committee to recommend that the color's not changed, and we can move on, and that one's put to bed.
So would that depend upon if it would change, if there was a new mascot, what the mascot would be? Or do you pick the mascot saying it's got to be something to do with orange and black?
Well, Redskins, I mean, it's kind of an oddity that we're the Redskins and we're orange and black to begin with. So I don't really think that.
There's a story there.
I know there is a story. So I don't really think that has to be consistent with this group.
I agree. That's a fair question, but unless it would be some unusual, you know, the Redbirds.
Yeah, as I was saying, you're not going to, if a change was recommended, you're not going to recommend the Blue Jays with an orange and black color scheme.
Well, you know, not that I'm suggesting we do anything ridiculous, but, you know, in some of the research I was doing, I think it's the College of William and Mary had had any number of different Native American mascots for quite some time, and ultimately they changed, and nicknames, and they ultimately changed their name to the nickname, to the tribe, yet they still had an Indian mascot. And in 2006, the NCAA said that their mascot was offensive, and they had to get rid of their mascot. So they remained the tribe, and their mascot is now a griffon, which is some head of one animal and the body of another. And how that relates to tribe, I don't know. In fact, I know it doesn't. So, you know, I don't, I wouldn't worry too much about it yet. I think for starters, we keep the orange and black, and we can talk about if we're going to change the nickname and logo, how we go about that.
So it's agreed. Consensus, our recommendation is keep the colors.
Keep the colors.
Thank you.
I certainly agree with that.
That cost would go up tremendously, though, if you, so.
Right.
Yes.
I have a question about the gym floor, the $170,000. Does that include all the labor to take the bleachers apart and put them somewhere for a while?
I can't tell you that because Patty did the work. I can just tell you it's scheduled to be replaced in two years regardless.
That was the price Cincinnati floor gave to Newton, or I talked to Cincinnati floor also, for them to replace it. So I would go under the assumption, yes, that's what they quoted to replace it.
I talked to the custodian, he didn't think that that would be included in that.
But is that something custodians would do or?
No, just.
I don't know the answer to that, but we're incurring that cost whether we change anything or not, because two years, that floor is scheduled for replacement. All right, so we're somewhere, I mean, just depending on, you know, what we end up doing with some of these uniforms, I think those are, I don't see the uniforms as being incremental cost. They see them as being accelerated cost. But uniforms aside, I think we're somewhere between 100 and $150,000, and maybe on the lower end of that when we talk about keeping things like the Hall of Fame, the plaques, the banners, things of that nature. Does that sound about right? Has anyone else been through the numbers in enough detail?
Well, I think, too, some of that's going to change with construction. I'm sure a lot of the paintings that's going to go on will be painted anyhow, and it's going to have to be replaced no matter what. So some of that cost is going to happen with construction either way.
You're right, and I'm not going there because I don't know how much, but I did talk to them. Some of this stuff is coming down with the construction. They were going to paint and have to put it back. So there's some of this, again, that's part of the scheduled renovations, but I can't quantify it, and so I don't want to try.
Yeah, part of it may be the labor to take it down, which we're going to incur anyway. What goes back up might be different, so it might be a portion of the cost.
Well, it was going to come down. It was going to be painted, is what I'm told, and that was going to happen regardless. But again, I can't quantify that, and I don't want to try tonight. But you're right, I think that is some, some cost that was going to be incurred, not incremental cost, that's actually included within these numbers. Did you have something, Elizabeth?
Well, I just wanted to go back to the discussion about the protecting the Redskins stuff on the history stuff, so on like the, is there anybody on the committee that has a problem with that? I mean, could we come to a consensus on recommending to the board that all of the historical things stay Redskins?
I think when you hear the report that Randy and I are going to give, you will see the two schools that we talked to, it was very important for them to keep the history, and they had some pretty creative ideas about how to do it, so.
Well, let's defer that to your report, then.
So I'm all for it. I mean, if that were, if we would go down that road, I think, and I don't want to speak for Randy, but we were pretty excited to hear about their ideas.
Other questions, comments? Patty, anything further on cost?
No.
I mean, so round figures, 100, 150, probably the lower end of that. Sound about right?
That would be optimistic, I would say.
Yes.
What am I missing?
I think it might be a little higher.
Yeah.
Well, I still, I'm still confused on uniforms, because I know you're saying over a five-year forecast, I agree, but.
I don't see the uniforms as being incremental cost. I mean, the uniforms are scheduled to be replaced. Now, it's, if there's uniforms that aren't scheduled to be replaced in the five-year forecast, then it's incremental cost, but if they're scheduled to be replaced, it's accelerating a cost that's part of our five-year forecast anyhow.
And I think that's the difference, is you're looking at the five-year forecast, and I understand what that's all about, but this is something we have to do within one year, not within five.
Well, maybe within one, depends, I get it.
Another question is source of. Another question is source of funds. Is all this district funds? Is some of this put on the boosters?
No.
Well, that's...
Boosters will not take responsibility for any of this.
That's the next issue I've got to report on, but I don't want to close the...
Okay.
I want to make sure we're finished talking about cost. All right.
One of my questions was, you know, I think you're about to get into this, is, you know, where's the money coming from? And with all the passion on this issue, I was curious to see if anybody would be willing to, if anybody would have taken it upon themselves to fundraise, if they're interested in making a change to help fund the change and not putting the burden on the taxpayer or the district budget. And I haven't seen anything so far, but maybe that's something that, between this meeting and the next meeting, if there are people who feel passionate about making a change, they might step up and, you know, write a check or prepared to write a check or something like that.
Well, yeah, because there are people that have offered to fundraise for other parts of this issue.
Well, so, let's start at the beginning. First of all, as far as source of funds, the starting point is the district's got to pay the district's own bills. We don't have another source of funds that magically appears just because we want it. The district's got to pay for anything that's already within its budget, and that's my point about the incremental cost. Things like the floor get paid for by the district because it was scheduled to be replaced. And there's other things that are within either the district's five-year forecast or part of the Anderson High School renovations that are no incremental cost for a change. But then everything else has got to fall outside it and is an incremental cost that's an additional burden on the district. And the only place to pay for that stuff is out of the district's operating budget. And that is going to be very distasteful to some people. And I agree wholeheartedly with Randy. I've got a bunch of emails from people that want change and I can assure you that if we make a decision, they'll be hearing from me about how much they want change and helping to pay for it. Now, I'm not presupposing that this district is going to do anything, that this committee is yet going to make any particular recommendation. But I care about this community deeply. And I would personally be willing to do a matching fund of the first $10,000 in order to start funding this change. But it's matching. And that means that all these people that want to see the change, you're going to have to step up and help do it. Now, how close do we get to the total cost? I don't know, but I agree with Randy that I'd like to see us doing a way that is tax neutral, or cost neutral to our taxpayers. I don't know if that's possible, but I think it's something we ought to try to do. And, you know, the cost is certainly a far cry from the million dollars that so many of these emails were telling us it was going to cost, but it's not an insignificant amount of money.
Yeah, I mean, I know I said in the very beginning that cost was a big factor in my mind and it still is because of the state of where we are. We're in the middle of a lot of things right now.
Excuse me, could you speak up? I can't hear you back here.
Is your mic on?
I'm sorry, I don't know if my mic's on. Can you hear me better now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry. I basically said that from the beginning, I've been concerned about cost because of the situation that we're in with all of the construction. And these, these numbers just really left me wondering practically, how would we do this? Because you know, you're running a business and you don't have the money to do something. You just can't do it. It doesn't matter what your ideology is, you have to be able to pay for it. So, that to me is still a big unanswered question that I can't get much farther until we figure that out.
The, I responded to the question on funding. You know, it is what it is. We, some of these aren't incremental costs or district burden regardless, but the additional incremental funds, it's got to come from someplace. If it can't come from fundraising, then the district's got to be prepared to pay it if we as a committee recommend the change and if the board accepts that recommendation. But as I said at the first meeting, and I think is worth repeating, we're in the middle of renovations. If we don't recommend a change, if the board doesn't make a change, we're about to reinvest significant funds in something that may change in the future anyhow. And I do have a personal opinion on that, and it's based on the work I've been doing here. But it's not my decision. And I think ultimately, this isn't a question of if. I think it's a question of when. But the committee may not agree with me on that issue. If it's a question of not if, but when, does it make sense to continue to reinvest in this nickname and logo while we're renovating the building, spending 25 million dollars on those renovations?
As long as you brought up if, when, it's real, right now, Ohio High School Athletic Association has stayed away from this. And so, for the moment, with the current leadership they have, I don't think they're going to touch it. But that's not to say that the legislature wouldn't at some point, whether I like it or not. That's not to say that Congress might get involved. They've been known to do things like that. So, I think your point about if, when is valid.
Well, let me share some information with you on that point. So, between 1988 and 2013, 18 high schools got rid of the Redskins name. Between December 2017, or I'm sorry, by December of 2017, that had declined from 62 to 49. California in 2015, and I know Ohio's not California, and thank goodness for that. But they implemented a law making it illegal to have, have the Indian mascot. Cooperstown, New York got rid of it in March of 2003. Port Townsend, Washington got rid of it in June of 2013. Lamar High School in Houston got rid of it. December 2014, Oklahoma City School unanimously voted to remain, remove the nickname. Lancaster, New York in January 2015. Fort Wayne Community Schools in July of 2015. Goshen, Indiana, I think one of the schools you all talked to, got rid of it. And the list goes on. It's, it's a trend.
So, we're bell-bottom pants. You know, I didn't research every school that kept it, but McLeod, Oklahoma, with a significant Native American population, just decided to keep it. As did, I can't get any closer without, is your mic on?
It's not on.
The green light's on, I don't know.
Don't try that one. Is that better? Okay. McLeod, Oklahoma just decided to keep it. A place in Pennsylvania did. Talk about renovation is probably a convenient time to make a change. It would have also been a convenient time to give us our parking spots back. I mean, I'm going to bring this up because I think Anderson's getting kicked while it's down. And I'm, I hear that from a lot of people. I'm still looking to see where the faculty bathroom will be in all this renovation because no construction guy can tell me he can see it on the plans. And I think Anderson's getting a raw deal here. So, while it may be convenient to change the logo now, would it be any different if we had to change it? I mean, in a five-year plan, if the legislature says we're outlawing Indians? I mean, some people's idea of diversity is to run from it and hide from it. Just, we'll just ignore that and then it's not a problem. So, would it be different if five years from now, if we keep the Redskins now, the state says you got to get rid of it? The state also said you have to find a new way to fund schools and I think it's taken more than five years for that to happen. I might be wrong on that because, but I don't think I am. So, is it just convenient or is it cheaper to do it now?
I don't know the answer of whether it's cheaper because I don't know whether we're going to have inflation or deflation, but generally, we have inflation. Generally, costs go up. But that's not the point I'm making. My point is not, is it cheaper to do it now, but does it make sense to reinvest in it while we're doing the renovations? That's the point I'm making.
If we're on a five-year program, I don't see where, you know, where it makes that much difference. And I see, being a teacher, this is a wonderful opportunity to actually do what was suggested the last time and increase our education of a significant part of American history, which would be American Indians. It's hard to grasp, I think, that most Indians, according to every survey taken, are very proud of their Redskins. And somebody in a discussion said, you know, it's just, it's not the thing to do to talk about skin color. Well, maybe I, maybe it's just me, but when I was a child, I was taught that black people were Negroes, white people were Caucasians, and that was the polite word to use. I think it was the black people themselves who wanted to be called black because they were proud of their skin. Once you get under the skin, everybody's pretty much the same. But I don't think that I can sit here and tell 90% of the American Indians that they're wrong about being proud of their Redskins and they're happy to see us emulate their virtues. I just don't feel like I can tell those folks I talked to on the phone that you're wrong about that. You're wrong about feeling proud of your Redskins. I just don't feel that smarter than them.
I think to play, I agree with you 100%, but to play devil's advocate, in the last report in 2003, it even stated in that report that the word Redskins was deemed offensive. But when you put Anderson High School Redskins, now it's no longer offensive. So, I mean, just to focus on whether it's offensive or not, I...
But the Indians, according to every survey taken, don't think it's offensive. The people who changed the definition of the word was the academic collegiate world. Do we need to discuss what direction they're going?
Well, but Andy, that's not exactly right. We've received a number of emails and letters from Native Americans and Native American organizations who said they felt the term was offensive.
I don't doubt it. And we've received some from the ones who said, educate, don't eradicate.
I get it.
So, there certainly is a wide variety.
I think we have to agree that there's a mix.
There's a mix.
There is a mix, and I'm not suggesting that even among the Native American community, there is a disagreement on the issue. I agree with that. But to Dave's point, the committee in 2003, and this is a quote from the committee's finding on the report of March 17, 2003, "There is general agreement that the word Redskins, used alone, is an offensive word. The committee found that surveys of 10 to 30% of Native Americans felt the word was offensive. Most dictionaries published after 1970 indicate the word is offensive." That's the findings of the committee in 2003. We've heard from some of these people. And I'm not trying to debate whether the term is or is not offensive. To me, that's the wrong debate because I know that nobody that has ever gone to or graduated from Anderson High School meant it in an offensive way. That's what they, it's a proud historical tradition.
It is.
I absolutely agree with that, but we can't discount that there are some that think it's offensive and it's just a bad look for Forest Hills. I want, I want us to be known for the great education, the great students and all the wonderful things that are going on with the district. And when I read in the newspaper, all the guy in the garbage that's going on and people saying that Forest Hills are racists and that Anderson High School is racist, it's flat out wrong. It's unfair, it's unconscionable. But that's the conclusion some people are making. And I know you do, oh, well, should we, we need to educate. I'm sorry, the trend throughout the country is to get away from that kind of name. And we're going to embrace it. It's not going to make us look better, it's going to make us look worse.
The trend among the Indians is to promote it. That's the biggest movement out there.
I don't know if I agree with that, Andy. There is, there is at least one organization that I'm aware of that is seriously promoting it. That's the only one organization I'm aware of. Now, I don't doubt there's others, but we've heard from a lot, and there is only one Native American organization that has promoted it. The others we've heard from have told us it's, they think it's offensive. And I'm not debating who's right. I'm willing to accept that there's a difference of opinion.
There is a difference of opinion. I, I'm not the chair, so I don't want to cut off discussion.
Go right ahead.
But I'd like to move into some of the factual reports that we've got.
All right, why don't you tell us?
Yeah. That's okay. We're going to have this debate.
Yeah.
And I'm not trying to cut it off because we're going to have to get through it.
Nope, you're right.
But I want to get to some of the reports that have been put together. Joe, do you want to lead the discussion?
I will do that, but I want to say a couple of things just to what Andy and Elizabeth said. I'm so sorry, but I have to do this before we go on. I 100%, I was sort of the person who last time said, well, costs are important, but it's not a determining factor. And the more I've let it settle and the more I've thought about it, the more important it has become, but it's become important because of what Andy said. And that is Anderson's getting a raw deal here. And, I mean, there was, there were some who thought three years ago that Anderson was going to be last, Anderson was going to be the biggest project, and Anderson was vulnerable. And, and so, with all that swirling around, it's a difficult time to bring this up. We got an email from one person who actually is a personal friend and a lot of you know her, and she said, you know, is this really the time to do this? You're kicking us when we're down. So, I get that. I get it loud and clear. I do. I love the idea, and we got, we get a lot of negative emails, but the more positive ones are starting to trickle in with, here's my plan for moving forward in a positive way. That would be awesome. History, whatever we do, beefing up our history of Native Americans would be great. My kids said they didn't really have that at Anderson. I don't know why. I don't remember having it in my high school either, so... But the one thing that I keep going back to in my head, and we've talked about this, all of us have talked about this, is if we were the Warriors, if we were the Chiefs, if we were the Indians, we probably wouldn't be here. It's that term that just sets people off. Right or wrong, good or bad, more on this side or this side, it's that term Redskins, which is unfortunate. Sorry. I couldn't help it.
I disagree.
Okay.
All right, you want to tell us about what you learned?
Okay. So, Randy and I talked to two schools and I have to start out by saying that these two gentlemen were so gracious and so amazing. And one spent 45 or 50 minutes with us and the other one spent so much time with us, Randy had to go to another meeting and I kept chatting with him. So, I want to say about an hour and 15 minutes. We started off with some sort of basic questions and the discussion wasn't specifically, it didn't go completely with the flow of these questions, although we kept bringing them back to our questions. So, we got most of the answers I think we were looking for. The questions were, what are the demographics of your district? How long have you been the principal? They were both principals. Your history with the district? The history of the mascot, its origin, how long you've had it? Why you decided to change it? The arguments that you received for and against the change? The process for changing it? The cost of changing it? Whether you did it in phasing or all at once? How did you, if you did, maintain the Redskins history? What was the aftermath? How long and what were the effects? The current name and how you determined it? The process and who determined it? And how is the district today? So, I feel I owe it to these gentlemen. I read my notes over, they look really bad, but I rewrote them so I could read them. Went on the website, did some research, went on Wikipedia, some other stuff before we talked to them so we would know a little bit about them before we talked to them. So, I felt like we weren't just asking them for all the information. First gentleman we talked to was Dr. James McSwain, who was, is from Lamar High School in Houston, Texas. Jim just mentioned that school. Houston, just so you know... Houston, just so you know, I didn't know this, is likely to surpass Chicago this year as the third largest city in the United States, so it's huge. The interesting thing about what Houston did was they had five logos to change. They had one red skin, which is Lamar High School, and they had four other schools with Confederate, I guess, for lack of a better way to put it, mascots. And one example he gave us was Robert E. Lee High School. They were called the Generals. Lamar is the biggest school in the Houston district. They have 3,400 students. Their demographics are 24% Caucasian, 2% multi, 36% Hispanic, 5% Asian Pacific Islander, 33% African American, and 1% Indian. No American Indian, no question they're different than us, so keep that in mind for whatever it's worth to you in your consideration of the comments. They were built in 1936. They're the oldest high school in Texas as well. Mr. McSwain had been the principal for 21 years. He said he's seen a lot of change, and he's also seen the need for evolution in public education. He was also a former school board member, lucky him. So, the history of the, their mascot, again, there were five logos to change. They did a district-wide approach to mascot renaming. The issue had been, this is his quote, bouncing around for over a decade. It was a campus issue. There were emotions on both sides. It had to rise to the district level to address it, not just the campus level, but to the district level. He said, and I think Jim has been trying to do this, I think we've all been trying to do this, it's extremely important to validate the issue on both sides. Nobody's right, nobody's wrong. It's, there's passion on both sides. He emphasized that over and over again. He said, excuse me, this was all under the history of the mascot, so I'm still under that topic. No one chooses a mascot or symbol out of perceived disrespect. And we've been receiving a lot of emails saying, you know, this was respectful, we wanted to, you know, we look at it as warriors, as leaders, as, it's been respectful. So, I think he, their district recognized that at all. He said the process began around 1999. There was, discussion began about respecting the history by the name in honor of Texas Indian tribes, but we recognize the world has changed. School groups began to individually, and this was interesting, to not use the red skins. So, when they'd get new uniforms, instead of getting a uniform with a red skin on it, they just started to get the name of the school on it, like Lamar, or LHS, or whatever. He gave the example of the drill team who are the, who named themselves the Rangerettes because people were growing increasingly uncomfortable with it. It kept coming up. They spoke with local Indian groups, as we have, and as have done with us. Got mixed reviews and opinions. And so, the understanding, this is the way he couched it. Now, keep in mind, these are both, both gentlemen are PhDs. They're learned, they're, if I had to guess if they leaned, if they leaned conservative or liberal, I couldn't tell you, actually, from all this talk. But he said, we became understanding of and accepting of differences. That began to build. We came to realize, if someone else perceives it as a negative, do I have a responsibility to react to it? In essence, if I value another person, maybe I should rethink my position or actions, which is a really hard thing to do, especially if the tradition is so important. The next topic we talked about were pluses and negatives about the change. He said the people that were most negative were the alumni. Long history of notable alumni, governor, lieutenant governor, entrepreneurs, largely, even though the district now is sort of more diverse. He said, we have a lot of staunchly conservative people that graduated from this high school, and many still live in the area. So, the most negatives they heard was from alumni. He said it wasn't a big deal for the kids, which I thought was, was interesting. And we haven't heard, I don't think either, a whole lot from the kids.
I could add some more to that later.
Okay. All right. And you can cut me off if you want. I'm going...
Just to back up that point, I made a point of talking to my track team on the buses, nice captive audience, and they did not want to change the nickname. They all knew, some friends who did want to change the nickname, but quite honestly, when I said, if the nickname gets changed, would it ruin your high school career? The answer was no. So...
All right. Sorry, my hair has caught in my glasses. So, we talked about, we talked about the cost. Their colors were red, white, and blue, and they kept them. District-wide, five schools, the cost was $2.5 million. They had three high schools and two middle schools to change. Theirs was the most expensive. It was the largest. It was $700,000. The source of funds came from board, board reserve operating funds.
Julie, can I interrupt just for a second?
Yes.
Just to be clear, that 700, as I recall, he said it included two gym floors, right? Were part of that?
Yes. He did. He did say that. And that was not in my notes, but I recall he said that.
Yeah.
Okay. Phasing, they did it all at once, as fast as reasonably possible. It was done by the following school year. We asked about maintaining the red skin history. The alumni, they have an active alumni association. They received donations. They created an alumni center in the school in conjunction with renovations they were doing. And this was his quote, do not erase history, but do not, but do not use, I'm sorry. We do not want to erase history, but we do want to use this as a current example to our kids. He brought up the football coach, who was a 30-year veteran of football, who was a naysayer in the beginning, and he said, he even came to understand, if it's good for our kids now, do it. Not the past, even though the past is important, but we need to look at the kids now and in the future. And I think, I think some younger moms have expressed that, too. Here, I mean. Aftermath, group spoke to the Board of Education, primarily, again, older alumni, over a couple months. No Board of Education member lost the next election because of it. No bond or operating issue was affected because of it, he said. Because I know that we have received emails, I think he, I don't know if I prompted that or Randy prompted that, or if we, he just, I think, I think I actually asked those questions because we've received some emails that have said, if you do this, we're not going to vote for you again, and if you do this, we're not going to ever vote for an operating levy again, which I just don't know why you, editorial comment on my part, I just don't know why you would punish kids for, for adult actions. But anyway, so, current name, we talked about the process and who they're called, the Lamar Texans. The board came up with the policy in September. They did not have a mascot committee. The board owned it from the beginning until the end. Everything was completely done by the following April. The board said, here are the mascots to be renamed, those five. Then they gave it to each school's site-based decision-making committee. Every school has it in Houston, apparently. And I think he said there were 200 and some crazy amount, 287 schools in the district, some crazy amount, but I didn't do, I didn't do fact-checking, so, but every school has that. And it consists of eight to 10 people. The schools were charged with coming up with two options under the leadership of the principal. Lamar High School, he talked about history. He's a history buff. I think he was a history teacher. He talked about the history of Lamar High School. It was named after, I think I got this name right, Maribou B Lamar, who was the father of public education. Our mascot, he said, was chosen from the historical perspective of the time when the school was built. We were trying to unify a new nation at the time. There was a term Texian, T-E-X-E-A-N. So, the two choices came down to Texian, which I don't think anybody outside of Texas, unless wonkish history teachers know it.
And Texican, also.
Right. Or Texan, and they came up with Texan. We asked him at the end, is there anything else you want to tell us? And he said, it's my belief that the school is the center of a community, that it's the first thing that the settlers built was a school and a church. Sometimes we fail to realize schools are the central identity of a community, which I thought was pretty profound. You need to ask yourselves, do I continue to do what hurts others? As a, as a good human being, part of my responsibility is to think of others and the impact on them. If I continue to do something, really should I? That was his editorial comments. And then he said, his parting comments were, think about, did I do the right thing for the kids and did I do the right thing for the world? So, and again, you know, I didn't think he was some flaming liberal. Randy may disagree. I thought he was very measured and academic and thoughtful, and do you have anything to say about that?
That was pretty complete. You took better notes than I did. But a couple of things I just, I would want to add. When we asked about phasing, they said, no, it was done all at once. However, I thought he was the one who said, over time, coaches had been making the decision to pull the name off of uniforms. And so, it wasn't, it really, he said it was all at once, but in reality, they were gradually moving to that over a period of time. And was that the right, have I got the right school?
He did say that, yes.
Okay, because one of them I know where the coaches, he said, I took him in his word, they had gradually been removing that from the uniforms. The other thing he said was, don't force it. Don't do it too fast. Take time to understand the issue. When we asked for any closing thoughts, and I thought that was, that was interesting. I think you covered, yeah, your point about conservative, I couldn't tell. I would just say they were both very enthusiastic.
Boy, were they.
Yeah.
They really were.
And just want to ask, they were Redskins, right? And they changed, they changed to Texans?
They were Redskins. And this is Dr. McSwain. I know you can't see this, but you guys can. What a delightful man. I mean, both of these guys, I would love to sit down and have a cup of coffee with them, just because I thought they were, were that great. I think Randy agrees. So, the other guy we talked to was not a guy, but actually a PhD also, named Dr. Barry Younghens from Goshen, Indiana. The demographics of Goshen are, they have 35,000 people in their district, 6,500 students, so sounding a little bit more like us size-wise. Eight, eight elementaries, one middle school, and one high school. And just so you know, Goshen is in north central Indiana, about 15 miles from the Michigan border, if you look on a map. The high school had 1,952 students in 1718, and 50% of their, their students are on free and reduced. And this is, this next demographic is pretty interesting. The Hispanic population and the Caucasian population are almost equal. The school has 54% minority total, 40% Latino/Latina, 7 to 8% mixed, and 5 to 7% African American. And of course, I said, how did that happen? How did you get such a big Latino population there? And he said it started out with orchards there. Agriculture, right. And then, he said, we have now the biggest RV factory, he said, in the world, and a lot of the folks that came to do the agricultural work have now graduated toward the factories and are, have, are making better lives for themselves. And so, that was just an interesting fact. As far as being the principal, this is his seventh year as the principal. He's been with the district since 1987, and he said he had an odd trajectory. He actually was the assistant superintendent at one point. He was younger than the, than the then-principal. And when that principal retired, he took the principal spot. He has spent his entire career there in that district, except for four years when he was a previous athletic director in a neighboring district. Mascot history, this is interesting also. They never officially adopted the red skins. In 1916, their kids were playing a basketball game with another school, and a lot of the kids on their team had the mumps. I guess it was before we had the MM, whatever, MMR, or whatever it is, vaccine. So, their skin was an odd color, and one of the local reporters called them the red skins, and it stuck. It was never an officially adopted name. But it grew, and in the 1950s, they started to have caricatures of a, of a red skin and the name stuck. There was no ill intent ever, he said, in, in using the name red skin. So, we then talked about the decision to change. He said the momentum was building. The topic came up every couple of years, sort of like us. The impetus was enough of the community found it offensive. The effective, I asked if the effect of diversity on the school was a factor, because sometimes I think people are more sensitive because of who they are. I mean, we're primarily a Caucasian community. And he said, I don't think it was a factor, but people were probably more sensitive as we went through the process. The deciding factor was, and I apologize if I mispronounced this, in 2014, the Potawatara tribe chief came to an executive session of the Board of Education and said, I'm not going to make this a big deal. I won't protest. I will be very respectful, but I think you should know this is offensive to us. That was all they needed on the board. The board discussed it two to three meetings. Again, no mascot committee, or branding committee, or logo committee. The board took it on themselves. The board took, took a vote in July of 2015. They made the motion to change, and in December, everything was done. We talked about the process, and this was probably the most exciting, I know you were excited, Randy, I could tell. He was so effervescent about the care that they took to do this change, not just for the naysayers, but for the kids in the school, basically for everyone, to make it as positive as they could. And these are some of the examples he gave us. The final, there was a final pep rally with the red skin, that unveiled new uniforms together. All previous letter winners that received letters when they were a red skin got a special patch that said, once a red skin, always a red skin. It was around the time in basketball season, they made a big deal of the last kid who scored as a red skin and the first kid who scored as a Red Hawk. They did this actually for all the sports. The first home basketball game in January, there was an open house for the alumni. They brought red skin memorabilia, and the school also displayed its memorabilia, and about 150 to 200 people that were alumni showed up and participated in that. They made a memorial shirt, which was available for one week and one week only. The front had a big Red Hawk, which was what they eventually went to, which was big and bold, and in the background, there was a red skin fading in the background. And the motto on the shirt was, honor our past, embrace our future. You could get it for one week only, and you can't get it ever again. The origin of the new mascot or symbol, again, is the Red Hawk, and this is also very exciting. They, they wanted to be done by December 1st of that year. And now, keep in mind, they made the vote. They did the vote in, in July of that year. The teaching staff were asked to submit, each teacher was asked to submit one name of a student they thought would be good to participate in the process for what's called the executive council. All staff members' kids were eliminated from the process. They matched when this, this, this group that was ultimately chosen, they were very, it was very important for them to mirror demographics for sex, socioeconomic, race, and extracurriculars, and they ended up with this 24-kid group. Am I, am I spending too much time?
No, no. This is wonderful.
All right.
This is good information.
They gathered all the 24 kids together, which was the executive council. They had one night, one night of team building with the athletic director, the principal, and some music teacher, and I'm not exactly sure why her, but he thought highly of her. Three committees were formed from that, and one adult shepherded each committee. One was public relations, who was shepherded by the principal. Voting and logistics, which was shepherded by the athletic director, and honoring the red skin, which was shepherded by the music teacher. Each committee formed itself. They asked for, I'm not exactly sure, maybe Randy could fill this in a little bit. I know they, they put out like, you know, who would be interested in serving on this? Anybody could apply, and they ended up with 75 to 100 kids total serving on these three committee, committees. A central office person, he didn't designate who that was, kept track of all, what was going on, just kind of kept, kept track of what was going on. I would see Susan Monk doing this. I'm just saying. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Some examples of the committee, committee work was, there was a process for the name. Students were given two-week window, submit names. They eliminated offensive names or names that didn't make sense, and the student body in total came up with 10 names. Alumni were also asked to vote on the names eventually. There were two different days and times for alumni to vote. I think they had like a morning time and then an evening time, but they had to come to school and physically vote. It couldn't just be by email. Middle schools and elementaries were also involved. It's a little different there than it is here because we have two high schools, so we might not want to go that deep if we ever did this. But, yeah, I'm getting there, guys, I promise. 1,300 people voted. There was two and a half weeks for artwork to be submitted for the new logo. He editorially said he wished they had more time for that part. They thought they kind of rushed that. And they ended up with the Red Hawk. As far as cost, the biggest was gym floor, walls, signs, and some athletic bags. A number of teams or clubs had already stopped using it, just, just like they, they said at Lamar, they had just said GHS or Goshen on their things. We bought new uniforms on purpose to build up the brand. Everything now has the Red Hawks name. It only cost them $25,000. As far as maintaining the history, alumni were especially worried that the red skin would, quote, go away and be forgotten, close quote. They did nothing with the trophy cases. They built a display case in... They built a display case in, in, in the Athletic Commons. In that case, there were things like a plaque honoring the mascot, pride in history, memorabilia. They worked with the County Historical Society. Old uniforms, and old basketball, a chief's head from the gym floor. I don't know how they fit that in there, but. And they kept, they had a nine-foot chief. We have a chief, too, for those of you, I think you all know that big chief we have. He, he kind of like, it's like, um, what's that, what's that, it's like Flat Stanley. He shows up in different places in Anderson High School, but he's still there.
He's having a lot of fun.
Yeah. He's moved around a lot. But they kept the former chief. He was in the Athletic Hall of Fame, and they kind of moved him to a less visible location, but he's still in the building. The chief is still in the building. So, that's that. And the aftermath, we talked about the aftermath. And this is what he said. "It hurt, it hurt for six months. It was like ripping off a Band-Aid. Came up every meeting, activity, et cetera, but not by the students. The kids embraced it. By turning the process over to, to the kids, there was a significant decrease in negativity. It was non-issue, a non-issue beginning February of the following year. One time a year, he said he hears something." And we asked him the overall question, "Do you have anything else you'd like to tell us?" He said it was really hard, but one of the best things we ever did. And he gave this final example, I think Randy may have been gone by this time, of a senior female leader, who was a student, who wasn't in favor of it at all. And she ultimately said, "There is another point of view. If people are offended, why would we want to do that?" So she did come to that realization in her mind. That's it. Randy?
Once again, very thorough. The only thing I would add is, when he mentioned the cost, I think we started to probe that because it didn't make sense. I mean, you can't do a gym floor for $25,000. And I, I don't think he actually did include a lot of the, the things that they probably did incur. That might have been, like I said, I don't know where the number came from, but I didn't want to insult the guy by picking at his, his numbers. The other thing is, this school even more so than the previous school, they did, even though it wasn't official, it wasn't a plan, they transitioned informally more so than the other school by taking off the name and the logo on some of the uniforms. And I think that's why he might have indicated that they didn't have to buy quite so many uniforms, because like I said, I didn't believe the $25,000 number. The other thing is, it was interesting that they did it in the middle of the year. That just kind of defied logic to me. But what I would say overall is, they did it unapologetically. They, they didn't apologize for it. They didn't try and hide it or bury it. They went for it. And I think you're, you mentioned, they made a big deal out of the last points on all these teams, scored as a Redskins, and the first point scored as a Redhawk. And I, I would not have expected that. But that, but that seemed to have worked for them. And I think also, the, the committees for the students, like they had three different committees, and the students took ownership. And I think that probably helped them in the long run, to be able to have a more positive situation, more positive outcome. Let me look at my notes real quick here. Like I said, you took much better notes than I did, but.
Well, that's because I knew I was going to talk.
Yeah.
Mr. Younghens, this is him, so you can see him. He looks like he sounds. He's very, very, very effervescent, really nice man. He said he would even be willing to come talk to us live and help us through this if we do this. Awesome human being.
As I said, very enthusiastic guy.
Great work, Randy and Julie. Thank you very much. Committee members, any questions? Follow-up for Randy or Julie?
I have a question. So is there another school that's going through this like we are, but did not make the change? They made the change. Is there somebody that did not make it that we could talk to, to find out, "Why didn't you do it?"
I don't know the answer to that. Um, no, I mean, I mean.
Well.
I'm not sure why that's funny. I mean, I'm not sure why that's funny. My task was to.
Right, right, right.
Talk to two schools that did the change. I'm sure there are other schools out there that have considered it, and if you want us to talk to a couple of those, I'll be happy to do that. But I don't think it's funny. I mean, I think it's.
No, I didn't mean it funny.
No, I know you didn't, but I don't know why I had to laugh. I don't know why that's funny, but.
I'm just trying now, as, sitting back and listening, I want them to know that we're looking at both sides.
Right.
It's kind of, it's kind of like right now, that the mind's made up.
No.
But it, it isn't. I know it's not.
No, this was the task.
But I want everybody to understand that it's still very open, and we, that we want to see both sides.
Yeah, and it's, it's pretty easy to spot the ones that have made change, because that's a public record. The ones that haven't made change, it's a little bit harder to find, but I'm sure we'll do our homework and find some.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly, if, if anyone in the audience would like to bring that school to our attention, or we can look ourselves, we can talk to more schools. If you, if this committee wants, Randy and I to talk.
Our email addresses are public record. Feel free to give us an email.
I think everybody in the room has emailed us at one point or another. So everybody probably already has it, but.
Now, I did talk to somebody at a Redskins school, Caldwell, Ohio. Track coach, good friend. They didn't change because it's never come up.
Well, and that's, it's like proving a negative, which, that led me to believe I didn't know why this was funny, because it's like proving a negative. I mean.
But that's what makes me question people who say, "Well, the Indians want this change." They're, they're not out doing that.
Wait, you mean they, they investigated, did a, had a committee, or you mean they just, it just hadn't come up?
I, I said, "How do you handle the controversy?" He goes, "What controversy?"
Oh, okay. I thought you meant that they had gone.
We don't have controversy. No.
Okay.
So, the only one that I know that, that I've read about, that actually talked about it and didn't change in recent time, is McLeod High School in Oklahoma. But I haven't talked to them. But here in Ohio, it appears that no one is, there's no other controversy except good old Anderson Township.
Did it come up, and they decided not to?
In, in McLeod? Yes.
Well, let me call them. I mean, if you guys want.
I've read about it in the paper.
Randy, you can help me.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments for Randy or Julie?
Well, just in my discussion with my track guys, and that's about 70 guys, they definitely, if this change is made, they would like to be, the students would like to have a part, a big part in this. But on the other hand, some of these guys are a lot more mature than you suspect. And I got to tell you, after all these years of teaching, I, I've sure learned a lot from the kids, and continue to. They would like to be involved in it, but they know they have classmates who say, "Yeah, let's be the Flying Monkeys," or something, you know? So, they want to lead in conjunction if a change is made. They want to be a part of it, but not like, "Hey, let's let everybody, you know, let's give."
We don't want to make a circus out of it.
Respectable choices, right.
Respectable choices.
And, and, you know, I was surprised that the kids said this wouldn't really ruin my, my high school career. It wasn't the answer I wanted. And I continue to, to learn from them every day.
I think that was learning from Goshen, is the genuine student involvement was a positive experience.
Now, I did a little research, sent out some emails to every living principal of Anderson High School, former principal, and a guidance counselor, long time, and I asked these questions. "In your experience at Anderson, did any family ever visit Anderson and say, 'We can't move in here because you're the Redskins?'" "Did we ever lose any donations for, whatever kind of donations, scholarships or anything, because we're the Redskins?" And I also contacted two trustees and the head of the local Chamber of Commerce, and asked the same thing concerning businesses. Has a business ever said, "You know, I don't want to be in the neighborhood where we have a Redskins high school," or "Has anybody left?" Or "Have any investments not come our way?" Or "Any donations?" And the answers there were also totally negative. And I'm getting, you know, I mean, I'm a Redskins, an old one. And I understand people being sensitive and offensive, you know? But everybody who's complaining that this is ruining our neighborhood, they moved here.
Yeah, I, I don't think that.
They picked us.
People are complaining it's ruining their neighborhood. I mean, and there is some hyperbole out there, more than a little bit.
You think?
But I don't, I don't think that, and, and if, if the suggestion has been otherwise, I, I apologize for it. I don't think anybody's saying Anderson Township, Newtown, Forest Hills is a horrible place to live. I don't think anybody's suggesting Anderson High School is anything less than the excellent school it is merely because of a logo or a nickname. That's, I, I don't think that's, that's what's going on. I think what we're talking about is what's best long-term for the community. And, you know, given what, what you see going on elsewhere, and giving that it is something that comes back to us. And it tends to happen when someplace, somewhere else in the country makes it an issue. It becomes a story in Forest Hills. I mean, that's how, that's how it keeps coming back. It's not somebody, and, you know, the suggestion is, is Julie and Elizabeth were talking earlier. The suggestion that somebody's pushed us to do this right now is not true. That's not what happened. We decided to put us on our own agenda, and then coincidentally, Cleveland Indians made the decision to change, to take Chief Wahoo off their uniforms. Again, the start, I got the call in my office, and then I got it on my cellphone, "Hey, let's talk. I want an interview, because this is happening someplace else in the country." It just keeps coming back. It doesn't seem like it's going to end. If, if somebody was opening a new high school today, do you think they would pick the name Redskins? I don't think they would, and there's a reason for that. And so, the question again, for the committee to address is, is this something that we think we ought to recommend? But that's the reason. It's not, it's not because Anderson Township and Village of Newtown are great places to live, or Anderson High School's not a great high school. That's, that's not it at all.
Well, I agree with you, but there are people who, who say it's tearing the township apart, and given us, but I, empirically, it hasn't happened. Nobody's.
Well, the debate's not healthy. That I'll grant you. But, but it's a debate that keeps coming back. We had it in 1999, we had it in 2003, and it's come up a number of times, you know, since then. And apparently, and seems to be more frequently. All right, anything else for Randy and Julie? Because we've also got to hear from Elizabeth on, on her efforts to track down some stuff.
I have a question on, about the debate. But why do they always come back to Anderson to make the debate? Why don't they go to the other 11 schools?
I don't know. They may go back to there.
Because I, I think it's because of the history. This has been debated in this community for, for decades. So this is the easiest place to come, especially in Cincinnati, the third largest city in the state, or second largest city in the state. And I think we're the only one in the region with Redskins, aren't we? So, I mean, of course, the local media's going to focus on us when something national is, is, is happening. And because we've addressed this in the past, it, it's just going to keep coming up. And maybe these other schools, they haven't addressed it. And so, it's, it's, it's a non-issue, and, you know, it's.
And that, that goes back to the, do we know schools that have, had decided not to do it? And I guess, have we talked to, I keep hearing there are 11 schools that have the Redskins logo besides us. Have we talked to them and asked them, "Has this ever come up?" And would that be helpful information for you? Because I'm happy to make those phone calls.
Well, maybe, maybe not. It keeps coming up here.
Or who cares? Or what? I mean, is it important for you guys to know that? Is it important for us all to know that?
Well, I mean, I think I would like to know if they were approached, and if they've, if they've discussed this issue, and they decided not to change, why?
Okay.
Now, we could also look back, and Elizabeth's going to touch on this, we've discussed this issue, and twice have decided not to change. Why? And I think that, I, I would like to know that as well, why we didn't change, you know, 15 years ago, or 20 years ago.
Would you like me to call the other Redskins 11 schools? Folks?
Sure, why not?
Yes.
More information's better.
I, I would say, be reasonable. 11's a lot. If you think you can get it done.
They, they, they might, you know, I don't think they're going to.
If you're willing to do it, sure.
I hope you don't have to take an hour and 15 minutes with each one. That's just it.
I think these, these guys were just very happy about how it, in the long run, how it all turned out, despite the challenges.
Mm-hmm.
No question. I don't think the conversations are going to be nearly as long.
There's a short list of questions here.
I'm happy to do it.
All right. Elizabeth?
Well, this, this won't be too long, actually. So, you might remember, I requested the research that had been done in the past. I was in college when this was done, and I just didn't have any memory of it. Somebody very nicely emailed me this the very next day, and then I forwarded it onto the committee, so everyone's had a chance to look at it. The short of it is that in 1999, it was brought up, and there's not a ton of information about that in here, but the board voted five to zero to keep it. Again, it came up in 2003, and that is when a committee of 21 people was formed. And their fundamental question was, so they, they entered their committee meetings with a question to answer. And it was, "Does the Anderson community feel that Anderson High School's use of the Redskins as a logo mascot is disrespectful or offensive to Native Americans?" They went on a process and studied things like purpose, history, the government's position. They had a form of Native American speakers, community speakers, financial impact. And Jim read some of these findings from, earlier in the meeting. They, their general agreement was that the word Redskins used alone is an offensive word. 10 to 30% of Native Americans felt the word was offensive. But the committee was studying the term Anderson High School Redskins. So they went into it, you know, grouping those together. And the conclusion was, Anderson High School Redskins is not an offensive term. When the committee voted, it, so 21 committee members were present. 13 people, which was 62%, supported Anderson's use of the Redskins. Eight people, which was 38%, opposed use of the Redskins. They also left this session with making some recommendations to the board. One was to add the curriculum of Native American Studies and Social Studies. Two was to rethink the mascot, the costume and the headdress being used, which happened. Three was to avoid Indian dancing, which happened. And four was eliminate the peace pipe as a school symbol, which happened. So, when I received this, I immediately sent an email to Natasha Adams at the District Curriculum Office, and just said, "Hey, don't need a big report, but could you give me some idea of what our current education is for Native American history? Where, where does it come up in our current curriculum?" And I asked that for a few reasons. Number one, because the committee had recommended it in 2003. And number two, because the, the idea of educate, not eradicate, would mean we may have to implement new programming if it's not already there, which has a cost to it. So I wanted to start to get an idea for that. I hadn't heard back from Natasha as of today, but I'm sure she'll get back to me. She's got a lot on the plate. So, did anybody else have any comments about that report?
I have none. Anybody?
My work they did was great. I, I find it hard to accept where it began, with the question, and I'm trying to find in here where the question is.
Does the Anderson community feel that, is that what you're talking about?
Yes. So, "Does the Anderson community feel that it is offensive?" And, I mean, is that the right question? I mean, it, it's the Anderson Redskins, so, I mean, if you're going to, if you're going to make a change based upon your perception outside of Anderson, is that the, is that the question? And, I mean, I think the report covered a lot of things, especially outside of the community. So I don't think that that was necessarily, you know, the focus of it, but it just seems that the starting point, that was the wrong question. Is it, is it offensive to the community? And, I mean, I don't think it was. And when I went to school, it never was. And, you know, but is it offensive to other people outside of the community? And I know that we're not gonna debate the, whether it's offensive or not, because clearly it is to some people and clearly it's not to others. And, you know, I, whether it is to me or not, to me, that, I, doesn't, it doesn't matter because I don't feel I'm qualified to say that this should be offensive to somebody. I think that's telling people that you need to be offended by this and that's not correct. And, so, and likewise, people telling us this is offensive to people, to Native Americans, but they're not Native Americans. Where's the, where's the validity in that? Do you see what I'm saying? I, I mean, I think that's my only qualm with the report. I think the report's great and it has a lot of factual information. I, I did find it interesting that the committee itself was 13 to 8 split on not change to change. I mean, and, I mean, the board voting 5-0, that, that doesn't surprise me. I mean, usually, school boards, you know, I think are pretty much in consensus on a lot of issues, so.
Well, to me, this, this kind of struck at the heart of why this is back at the table. So, I keep hearing the question a lot about, why are you even considering it? Why, you know, these other districts or these other schools are getting approached or they get pressure and they just shut it down. They don't even let it get to the table.
Mm-hmm.
We do really care about what our kids are learning. And we do really care if there are students that feel intimidated or don't feel included. And, and this isn't about being politically correct at all. It's about the way that a new generation of kids looks at things. And that's why it's at our table. That's why we didn't go behind closed doors as a board and make a decision without talking to people. It's why we're talking about it. We, we owe it to the students and this community to have a public discussion about this when it comes up. I would question the board if they shut it down. I, I'm proud that we brought it to the table. So, to me, the fact that this group, however many years ago this was, landed there and that we are bringing it up again, is a positive thing. This says that we are listening, that we actually care about what we are teaching these kids.
So, are you, I'm not, are you, I don't mean this as, as it's gonna come out. So, should, should a focus be on, is this the right thing for our current and future kids? Is that sort of what you're saying?
So, another thing people keep telling me is, listen to your heart. And that is not the way, that's not the way for me to make this, to think about this. Because, my heart, I'm a Redskins. I went to Anderson. I, I mean, I'm a very traditional person on all fronts. I'm also raising three little kids, ages 3, 6, and 9. And the conversation, the way that they look at things like race and inclusion are different from the way I looked at them when I went to Maddox. They're at Air. So, it's a very, very complicated thing to think through. And it's way beyond political correctness. It's what do I want my kindergartner to think about the way that people are seen and the way that they're labeled? And, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying I think one way or the other. To me, Redskins not offensive. It's not. And it is to some people, it's, it isn't to others. The question to me is, as a district, is this what we want for our students? It may be. And if it is, we embrace it and move on and teach, you know?
Your question was, you know, how was, I can't remember what you said now, but how was a decision made back in 99 and 2003? And I did sit through the, I wasn't on the committee, but I did sit through the meetings. And I think, to your point earlier, the perception from the board was that the vast majority of the community supported keeping the name. And therefore, that's how the, the decision was made. Now, we've said over and over and over, we're gonna do what's right. Jim, you laid it out the very beginning. This is not a popularity contest. That's not, that's not the way you make the best decision for the district, for the students. And so I think, you know, that, that's what we've gotta keep in mind. But to answer your question, that's, that was what I saw, the way it went down, whatever it was, 20 years ago.
Well, that reminds me of something else, too. It's another thing people keep saying is, well, you're elected to represent this group of people, or this group of people. And if you don't represent us, you're voted out. And I'm only been here four months. But as I dug into this and searched my soul, I ran because I support public education. And I support, that's what you're on a school board for. You're on a school board to protect what kids are learning. So I've tried very hard to block out what anyone in, in particular thinks we should or shouldn't do. This is about looking at what are about, right here is our strategic vision. This, I've been looking at this every single day. What do we wanna teach our kids? Research, questioning, exploring, problem solving, feeling secure and valued and able to take risks. I mean, that, that's why I've tried to stay a peacemaker through all of this, because this is really what it's all about. This is just a surface level issue. It, it truly is. And we, and we should be doing this the same way that we're teaching our students.
I, I agree with you. I was an Anderson Redskins, very proud, 12 years. I think I told you last time, one of the proudest days of my life was putting on an Anderson Redskins uniform, because I was not the greatest athlete. The fact that I made the team was, that was, I was glad. So that was proud. But it wasn't a given. But to act like the world hasn't changed around us is naive. As proud as I am to have called myself an Anderson Redskins and not one moment did I ever think of it as something that was negative, I, we've got a, you know, the reality is, the world has changed around us. And we are gonna have to take that in consideration as we move forward and ultimately make a decision. I, I think, you know, we talked about, if we make the change, there'll be losers. If we don't make the change, there're gonna be losers. One of the things that I was looking at was, is there some kind of a compromise position? To, to keep the American Indian heritage, a couple of them have already been floated, chiefs. I did some research and I wasn't able to follow up with a third chief, but the Cheyenne, who were in this area, to see if we wouldn't-
Shawnee?
Shawnee, excuse me. Thank you. The Shawnee that were in this area, to get, see if we could maybe transition to that nickname. To, to see if there would be support. I got lukewarm support from one tribe. Luk, well, sort of a negative, but not no, from another one, and I needed to get ahold of the third one. But the point I was trying to make is, is there some kind of a compromise situation that we can come up with to keep our American Indian heritage? But possibly, and I'm not saying this is my opinion, I'm just trying to throw things out on the table for discussion, move away from the Redskins name.
So, you keep the, you keep the Indian, the, the Indian head logo and the only thing that goes away is Redskins? And it's some other type of Native American?
So-
Possibly. But I will say that I, I found out that the logo we're using right now apparently is not authentic. We'd need to change that. If we were gonna go with, with an actual tribe, we'd have to-
Hold on. Before we get there, we're, we're getting closer in time and I want to make sure we have an opportunity to discuss what we're gonna do on April 30th and a little bit more about the process. Is, is that all right with everybody?
Sure.
So, Andy, it, it was your idea and I, I thought really a good one, that we consider a separate meeting to, to let everybody come and provide with their public commentary. You know, with the way we're going, we haven't had time, but if we set it aside, as you suggested, a separate meeting for nothing but public commentary, you know, give everybody a couple, two, three minutes each, whoever they are, we ought to be able to hear from a whole lot of people. What's the committee think about that?
I think that's a great idea.
Still America.
Yeah.
All right, so-
Yeah, I would absolutely support that.
I mean, I-
I would, too. I think, so, people wanna hear, want their voices to be heard. And, and I understand that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We've, we've heard you. I mean, we've been buried with the emails. And I'm reasonably certain I've responded to every single one, but I say that no doubt there's somebody sitting here I didn't respond to. And if so, I'm sorry I missed one. But, but I, I think we've talked about it and, you know, we'll do with April 30th, it's set for April 30th at 7:00 PM here. We'll do the whole two hours as nothing but public commentary. What I think we ought to do, and I have no idea how many are gonna show up and wanna talk, and I have no idea how many are gonna wanna talk in favor of changing versus against changing. But I think what we ought to do is have a sign-up sheet for each and alternate. And if one group runs out, then the others can keep going. And, what do you think? How long each? Two or three minutes each? I mean, if we're here two hours, 120 minutes, two, two minutes each is 60 speakers, I, gosh, I hope there's not 60 of you, but-
You can, you can say what you want in a lot, less than two minutes, I think, if you plan it.
How much time? What do you all think?
No more than two minutes.
Limit to two minutes each?
As far as the alternating, I just, just let people, I think you just let people speak when they, I mean, I-
Well, here's, here's the reason I, I think we ought to have-
Will there be a fourth meeting with us to decide?
Oh, yeah. We're gonna have to have another meeting.
I think this should be an additional meeting, not a-
That's right. They don't be, we will have another meeting after, then at least one more. I said at the beginning, I'd like to move this thing as quickly as possible because I think, you know, keeping it out there without making a decision isn't healthy, but not at the expense of due process. I don't wanna rush this. I wanna make sure we're doing it right. I wanna make sure the committee feels comfortable with the pace. I wanna make sure that the community doesn't think we're short-circuiting the process. And so, yeah, we will have at least one more meeting.
Okay. I hope we do, but can I make another comment with that?
Absolutely.
One, one of the things I see as my role here, and I could, yeah, I guess I can see it as everywhere I want, is to defend Anderson High School and to watch out for it. I don't think that my friends and neighbors are bigots and racists. I think the people who say that are wrong. I hope that nobody takes it out on a future levy, no matter what decision is made. But as long as we're talking about being offended, and I'm gonna stick up for Anderson High School. I think a whole lot of people are offended that we're gonna spend money on this while we still can't park at our own school. And when, and I haven't seen the blueprints, but nobody I can talk to at school can point out where the lady teachers can go to the bathroom in privacy. And I think they're offended. And I'm offended because three minutes between class and you're supposed to go to the restroom, and Anderson's a big school? And I'm fast and I can't do it. And so while we're talking about taking care of people who are offended, I'm just gonna use the bully pulpit here to watch out for my friends and neighbors and the school and the people who come, that if the construction table, timetable is important, maybe we ought to look things over, school board people. Yeah, I'm just gonna say it in public, because I wanna watch out for Anderson.
Andy, I have-
And I know the Redskins term is changing. But I'm just gonna use this bully pulpit to say, let's watch out for Anderson High School.
Look, I, I don't wanna turn this meeting and this committee into a discussion about the construction. I'm happy to have that discussion with you anytime you want.
I just wanted to bring it up.
I get it. And, look, you, you, some of you know, maybe some of you don't. We have had lots of problems with the contractor at Anderson High School. We've, that contractor, we had terminated him. We had a call on our performance bond with Travelers Insurance. They've got somebody in and what do they do? And hire the completion contractor? They bring that same performance construction back in? I'm telling you, we're aware of the issues. We're working on the issues. Lots of resources are going in. It has not gone the way I would like. But that job is still gonna get finished and it's still gonna get finished right. And the park is a whole nother problem. And a lot of that has to do with the transportation department and our efforts to locate another facility. And we've looked at 14 of them and I could go on and on about that. I'm happy to discuss it. And I'll take all the heat that we as the Board of Education accept and in some cases deserve for the way things have gone. They'll get finished. They'll get finished right. That's our burden to bear and we'll do it. And I'll take the beating for it because that's the position I'm in. I get it.
Well, I just wanna stand up for my-
Andy-
Tribe.
That's why you're here.
I, I know.
And I love you to death.
I know that's why you ask.
And I, I respect you.
I know you do.
So, I'm happy to, happy to hear the comments and I, I appreciate it. I really do.
Just to wrap up, I, I support the idea of public input at the next meeting. I think two or minutes is fine. The only I would ask is, be thoughtful about your comments.
Or not.
Okay, well, I would ask that you would be thoughtful, because-
Well, the reason I say that is because I wanna give people the opportunity to talk and, you know, they're gonna come up and talk and some of them are gonna be just like some of the emails we get.
Well, fine, but I'm just saying-
And some of them are very thoughtful and we appreciate it and some of them aren't. I responded to somebody today, actually, I think it's my best response to date. I won't share with you the comment, but my response was, we've received a lot of emails and yours is among the least helpful.
Well, the thing I was gonna say is, I compliment this audience because you laid down the ground rules and they followed it.
They've been wonderful.
And very respectful and I appreciate that. To me, that's what I would expect in, in Anderson Township.
All right, one more comment and Julie has a question and-
And I have one more comment.
So, just, I just wanna make sure we're clear. April 30th, public commentary, two, two minutes each. We'll have a sign-up sheet for each side. We'll go back and forth and when one side's out, the other can keep going. Sound reasonable? All right, Julie, you had a question?
I'm, I'm struggling with something that was said about 15 minutes ago. And I just need to understand the reason. I'm, I'm not expressing any perspective. I'm trying, I'm struggling. So, if we were building a new high school, someone said, the question was asked, would we call it the Redskins? And I think everybody pretty much said, probably not. Why not? I need, I need to understand that.
Is that a rhetorical question?
No, I, whatever you, you don't have to give me everything in your head right now and maybe you could think about it, but if there's anything right now that, that-
Well, the answer to me is simple. Who'd sign up for this? I mean, you know, back in the 19-
I think it's deeper than that. I wanna, I mean, I want a reason. Not that it's, it's difficult for us all to sit here and every, all these folks to come here and care and, I need to know why. Is it tradition that's important here, but going forward, we really don't think it's a good thing? I, I don't get it. I mean, I'm, I'm trying to analyze it critically thinking.
So, I mean, I, I know that at least a certain segment of our community, a certain segment outside our community, both within and outside the Native American community thinks it's offensive. We've been told that. In 2003, the committee found that.
But, okay, but what's the difference? What's the difference between keeping it and having it as a new mascot? Tell me what the difference is. Is it tradition and how much it means to us and our past history? I mean, what is it besides that? Not that that's a bad thing. I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I think it's a great thing. But what is the reason?
I think a lot of it is the tradition and the fact that, that, that people who have been the Anderson Redskins don't act like racists and bigots. So there's a certain defense mechanism there. The word is changing. I mean, no, you know, remember the old song, Don, we now are gay apparel? That word just has changed. You know, that word, the gay word. Words change. And, and the Redskins word is being changed for us by, by people with an agenda. You know? The word is being changed by people with an agenda. It's not being changed by the people with Redskins. Now, some of the people with Redskins are following the academia liberal agenda, but if we change everything that offends 10% of the people, you know, goodbye pork chops. Because the vegans are gonna win.
That's the one thought I'll take home with me. Goodbye pork chops.
I think, I mean, I think of the histories, a new, a new high school, there's no history. We've got decades of history invested in Redskins here. So, I think that's the difference.
I agree. I think it's, it's all about, you're not gonna, just to what Jim says, you're not gonna name a new school Redskins and then welcome the, the debate. And here, in, in Forest Hills, you know, 80 years of Redskins is, you know, that's, you know, for some people, they wanna fight for that.
Well, and one of the other things I've been trying to get to the bottom of is, is it the Redskins tradition, like that actual word? Or is it the Native American pride and tradition? So, is their middle ground shifting slightly, evolving versus killing?
See what you all can address in your two minutes and April 30th?
Right. I mean, we're, we're trying to be super honest up here and like tell you where our heads are and all the things we're listening to. Because this is a process. I've begged everyone to just be patient through the process because the only way you arrive at a good decision is to hear all of it. And that's what's happening, and we are doing our best to do that. I can, I know I can speak for everyone at this table.
Well, and I know the phrase educate, not eradicate, does that mean-
Right.
Not eradicate Redskins? Or does it not, does it mean not eradicate the Native American history?
That is exactly what I've been now trying to-
I'm sure we will hear more about that on April 30th.
Yeah, we're hoping for it.
Patty, you had something else.
Like Julie, I have to go back 15 minutes ago, but when you talked about the people that, how it's gonna affect the community. And the community, do you mean the community of Anderson, or do you mean the community of Ohio? Because I think it's a difference-
Well, I think the Forest Hills reputation is important, both inside Forest Hills and outside Forest Hills. I want our schools and our children to be known for the great things we're doing here. I don't want when somebody applies to their college of choice, and the admissions people see on their Forest Hills, I don't want them to think, oh, that's the school with the Redskins mascot. I'm telling you-
People, people.
Hold on, we, we've got rules here. This is, you can tell me on April 30th, I'm telling you, I don't think it's impacting their applications anywhere. I'm just telling you, I don't think it's a good look outside of Forest Hills. Now, is, is that impacting people moving here? No. Is it impacting the education? No. Is it impacting where they go to college? No. It just doesn't put us in the best light. And nobody has to agree with me on that. I'm entitled to an opinion, too.
I just think when we look at the, about affecting our community and our schools, our community has been very vocal about what they've been wanting with everything, I mean, between the signs and the Beach Mountain Forest, and that the community's letting, letting us know now what they want. At what point do we start looking at that? Are we, do we not look at that part, and we're looking at-
That's something the committee's gonna discuss. I mean, that's what we're doing now, that's what we'll do in the next one, two, or more meetings.
I think every committee member's gotta take all that into consideration. At some point, we have to, you know, make a decision, well, not a decision, but make a recommendation. And you gotta, that's, that's why we're here. We have to take all that into consideration. It's not one, the other, it's no rules. I mean, there's no, no-
All right, for the future, April 30th, we're gonna have our public commentary. I think we agreed today that we're gonna maintain the colors. Additional work going forward, Julie's gonna call some of the schools that decided not to make a change. Is that, is that what we agreed on?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reach out to all, all 11 high schools in Ohio and McLeod as a start. And if there's another school that you know that has addressed this and decided, we're not gonna move, let me know.
And, not to add additional work, but, I mean, the debate isn't just on Redskins on a national level or even a state level. I mean, there's schools that change from Warriors or Braves or whatever, and, and maybe they didn't change from that. So I, I don't wanna just narrow it just to Redskins, but if it's the Native American imagery that people have been, that they have addressed but didn't change or change.
Well, that is going out, out there. I, I think that might be broader than the, the work we've got to do here, unless the decision of this committee is to recommend going to a different Native American mascot. And if that's gonna be something that is under consideration, then maybe it'll require some more work, but-
Of course, I don't think Indian Hill or Merrimott have had any pushback that I'm aware of, and I haven't done in-depth research, but I haven't heard a peep.
That's what I was, that, I think maybe that's what I was getting at. Maybe we reach out to them and just see if they have received any kind of, of pushback or any kind of protest or whatever, or any kind of time where they had to address, address their logos and mascots, and they decided not to. I mean, I think Indian Hill, to me, they're, they're pretty much gonna say, we're not really gonna address that. But, I mean, you know, Merrimott, I don't know.
One of the, one of the handouts that I had, for everybody, this Neshamene High School in Pennsylvania, remained the Redskins.
After they thoroughly considered it, or they-
Yeah, and this handout was about their educational curriculum that they use with their kids, just a rough outline of it.
All right, anything else that the committee wants us to look at, any other work that we ought to be doing? We've actually, I guess, now have, not just till April 30th, but to whatever date we are able to select after that. And by the way, I'll have either Susan Monk or my legal assistant reach out to get some availability for next meeting.
I will follow up with Natasha on the curriculum.
Anyone else? Anything? Any closing comments from anyone? Well, once again, everyone, thank you so much for coming. Thank you for respecting our rules. Thank you for all your passion. We really do appreciate it. April 30th, 7:00 PM here, we'll see you then. 7:00 PM.
Seven.
Schools, Neshamene and McLeod, we'll be part of those conversations.